All right, call meeting to order.
Karen.
Karen.
Carol.
Yes.
Charlie.
Present.
Yeah.
Here it is. Okay. I'm going to read this. I'm glad that it was submitted by the United States of America. And it's very popular for Sam's one nation on our behalf. And we do this one with whatever we're doing at our sister on.
Okay, well, we got it vouchers.
Well, who will be kissed for the last day of the holiday?
Yeah.
Okay. Just your comment.
Yeah. The.
Easy.
Go the other way. Yeah.
Yeah, because this way they land up on.
And that you can take in the middle there.
It was getting long. They won't do them very exciting. So we need.
Well, you gotta say those things.
Your own change. Everything just like you need to do. Yeah. Yeah. So. Yeah. Yeah. Sorry. Yes, it's.
Lucy.
Again.
Thanks, Leo.
You're brilliant.
Thank you, everyone.
Very good. I just thought.
No, it's been months. There were. One time.
Just here reverse. You're used to something. Because I know how many things we have to work on how. We have to wait for the sun. But you love. It's crazy. It's always there. Yeah. It's awesome. Especially. So we're in the other class. I like the morning. The morning.
Because.
It's good. Okay. I go. I guess.
You're.
You know.
It's so.
Over there. Yeah. Their government. Don't say it. Oh, yeah. I think it's actually careful. Because in front of the despite.
No, it was Lisa's idea originally. And I was not sure.
It's like not too much. Somebody's breaking out of a party. You have a way. Yeah.
Place.
Yeah.
So.
Just a word. I'm not. She didn't like. I can see.
Now we see. So.
It's hard for me to get. Like, there's a lot of nature there. I'm just getting worried.
Yeah.
Or show. So. Like, now this is. This is what he did.
Closer.
Some cases. Some there. I'm sorry. My thing. Okay.
And they were. Yourself. They didn't.
Oh, there.
Oh, yeah. We don't. We don't love this.
To that. I'm sorry, you're bringing it. You're really just.
So.
But she's very.
Okay.
Oh, just all right. So.
All you got to do. I think I'm feeling this. Everyone's on his. And are you playing?
Who love that for a while?
Oh, yeah. I didn't. I didn't. You mean, I did. I kept seeing the last time on. You were one. For a day. And you get. Wow.
That's a good time.
Yeah. Wow. Thanks.
Your question. It's.
Marco's. Yeah.
It's all good.
Oh. You really know that.
That's an old. That's from last year. You never paid in. Talking about.
Follow me. I mean, somehow. It's one. Could not make it. They had to see. And now.
Every day. I think I thought. Said. Just before.
The lady.
You get her. But I.
No, I did.
I don't want to go. But I just have to. Trans. Look at. He's just scheduled longer.
It also done. Yeah.
Before. I got. I don't know if they did it just the last night. It's personal. I mean. You get a little place. You have to. And then. But they're doing. They're doing. They're building. Like.
Some.
Next to. So. I go. One.
That's interesting.
Yeah, I get to be there. There's. Right. Well, we have. Nineteen. Yeah.
Thanks. Yeah. I mean.
I should back down.
Okay. I want to. Yes. I. Yeah.
You're all just. Over placement. You have to go there. Right outside.
Now.
Okay.
Oh.
We are gonna. Go to privilege of the floor. Hey, department reports. Um, Susie.
Um, I set out my annual report. And because I wasn't here last time, I usually try to present something light. For the holidays and I didn't get a chance to, so you're gonna have to suffer through Christmas all over again.
You got a present? Any of your present for me?
No. Not you. Santa told me not to.
I'm sorry.
Still.
Yes, he does.
That's not by you, Charlie.
You need this one? Instead, I can put the other. Do I have? Okay. Um, I found this article. In the Fairhaven Register, January third, nineteen eighteen. Uh. World War One is just over. It ended on November eleventh. Uh, nineteen seventeen.
Hello, McCall.
Yes. And, uh, the United States, the World War One started on July twenty eighth, nineteen fourteen. And the US entered on April sixth, nineteen seventeen. And the end was November eleventh, nineteen eighteen. Also, near the end of that war, the influenza epidemic raged wildly, including nearby Oswego, New York, where they set up a field hospital just for uh, influenza patients and a person who lived right next door. Val Kirk Redd was the head nurse and ran their field hospital, which was composed of tents. And you probably can imagine how terrible it was being there uh, in this kind of weather. As we're all suffering a little bit today. And, uh, Val wrote that things were so bad in Oswego that she could have had a hard time getting through the city because of all the fumes that were taking place. That's how bad it was. But anyway. Uh, technology, uh, had increased the, uh, the u- usage and utility of aerial planes, as they were called, uh, in war. And so, uh, a person even living in the town of Sterling, May, once in a great while has looked off and seen and heard an airplane. I think I took a, had a picture of one in here. Maybe not. What is there one? Yes. The Curtis S six tri- triplane, not a biplane, with two sets of wings, like three sets, manufactured in New York State and Hammond'sport, the Curtis Wright Aerial Plane Company. So this says, our item last week concerning the aerial plane, which some of our people thought they had seen on Saturday night, brings us to us this week, further developments it up the case and cause the mystery to deepen. Clinton Razback informs us that on the same night and at the same hour, he and his wife saw he was sure was the right, the light upon an aircraft moving through space as they were returning from Sterling. They, by the way, lived in Wilkins. They were in the vicinity of the Floyd Kievel farm near Sterling Station when they saw this mysterious light, which was moving along, not a great distance above the earth. They watched it until it disappeared from view behind Mr. Kievel's orchard. Mr. Razback is positive that it was an aerial plane, as no other conveyance could have traversed this height that the light was located. Well, we cannot fathom the mystery. No other way than to believe that the aerial traveler was none other than Santa Claus or his advance agent, who was scouting the section for his performance on Christmas Eve. Nevertheless, be as it, as it may, when such evidence comes to us as Mr. Razback's, we are forced to sit up and take notice of, and the morassity cannot be questioned. So that appeared January third, nineteen eighteen, just a couple of months after the war ended. And I did include that photo of uh, the airplane and a poster nineteen seventeen, Christmas time, the year before. And then on the back, famous, uh, Saturday evening post. Uh, little girl and a soldier sharing their food. It looks like probably a little Dutch girl to me. Okay, so he laid a merry Christmas out of the park.
Thank you. Thank you.
Otherwise, if you have any question about the annual report, I'm trying to answer them.
No. I don't want. I know. Picture, anybody else see the the weirdness going across the sky? Probably a couple of weeks ago now. I don't know. It was all over the news. My grandson and I were walking back to the garage. He actually snapped a picture of it when it looked black. But you had to let it develop for a minute, look at it for a minute, and see the lights, little dots of lights going across. It was quite extensive. And it was moving from west to east. And and southeast to local.
It, so. I saw it one night. Uh, my neighbors told me about it. I have gotten there without them. Um. What? I remember out west when they would do that. Um, I think it might have been Starlight. Like something for the new plants.
Yeah. So. It was all kinds of.
Because it was coming. It was coming from that way.
Really. Something with drones or something.
It's totally been. Good.
Okay.
That's a story.
Uh. I see. I'm bored.
We've been, uh, working on a couple of projects and keep committing.
Okay. Okay, committee reports. Um, short term rental, we will be having a meeting, uh, beginning of February. No. Water. Uh, for the water. We are still moving forward and, um, as of the last meeting, we are still, uh, set to advertise for bid, um, by the end of next week or the beginning of the week after, hopefully the end of next week. Um. Senior citizens, Frank.
Yes. Uh, we're, we're busy, not with meetings, but, uh, we had, uh, Bev has worked on trips. She's got six trips, actually, just about booked. There's one there. She just got here back in the lake. And we get the estimates from, um, on the dagger quotes for these six trips. And I'm going to have to look there and negotiate with them a little bit and see.
Big increase?
Yeah, quite an increase on some of these trips. I, Bev was supposed to get me a list, but I left this afternoon and Jack, I'm home, she didn't have her homework done, so. I know, I will give you the quotes that we have right now on these trips. I'll probably drop off her half here, maybe have, you know.
Was it like a overall percentage increase?
Uh, not, it, it's hard to figure that because all six trips are in different parts and you can't tell where the increase is. The only increase we can see that's positive is the one to Wreck-It Lake. That was just, that was just shy of two thousand for that trip and it's just over two thousand this year. And that was a couple of years ago, in Wreck-It Lake, beginning of something like that. And, uh, so that you could probably figure a percentage out from that, but these other ones, the highest one I think we got is like twenty four hundred. And then, like I said, I don't have the sheet air done, but that doesn't make any difference. I'm going to have that for you. And, uh, but she's been working on that and take her there on rate. She focusing right in on it real good. It's made a little liar real good. I, I stay out of the whole thing because it goes faster, you know, when I'm not in the picture. And, uh, so I'm just a messenger, so.
Leave it, leave it to the brains of the.
Yeah, you got it. Now, she works very hard. It's very serious to this. She, I don't know how many phone calls, emails she's been at already with this. And I, I trained her well. Yeah. Uh.
I'm telling her you said that.
You just never mind. Yeah.
She probably listening.
Uh, let's see, one other thing, uh, right now, I've been busy with, uh, the Cuba County Council of Senior, the senior citizens. That's our main group. This is a this is a organization that's for senior citizens. Obviously, it's been in existence since about nineteen seventy three. Uh, Sterling Silver Seniors, they've been in it since nineteen seventy six. And you'll say, well, what's the big deal? This is a big deal for our club. We're, we're in contact with a lot of things. Number one thing that you can say right off the top is we're tax exempt, our senior group is. And that means a lot when we go out to lunch on these trips. We save a heck and a heck of a lot on them. And some of these places charge the sales tax anyways for an entrance fee. We get that deducted. And, uh, it's going to cost us forty bucks this year to join that. We get it back on the first trip, that money, or save that mon- money. And, uh, the other thing, I'm serious tonight. And geez. Anyway, but, uh, and then, uh, but there's other things with that. And they give us our, what is it then? Five oh one. Yeah, we're, we're in that. And Sterling has been in it since nineteen seventy six. They've gone to this. And. And I'm the head messenger on it right now, or president. If you want to say president, I'm not much of a president. I just sit there and talk. But, uh, so that's going along. That's going along good. We're going to have an event. That's what, that's we get to what we're doing. Well, we got one of the other ladies, my, my vice president there, she's got a couple of people lined up and we're going to do a ten. We got a tentative date of May second. I have all kinds of information on this because the meeting on May seven, or February seventh. And it's going to be, uh, going to be an open thing, uh, for seniors. All of a lot of things that, you know, I think, uh, I don't know all the topics yet because they haven't even touched that. And February seventh, I'll have more, but it's going to be available. But the thing that, right now, we're looking at going to the Senate Fire Department. Have it there because it's probably central for all the other clubs around the county. And, uh, that's what's on the books. It's just, we don't know yet. It's just getting started. But I, the last couple of weeks, I've been making our kind of phone calls with our other clubs to get things going and that. And I've been doing a lot of serious things on this, you know.
That's right.
But just, but I can, I can, okay, now I want to go back to the go-go. Because, uh, oh, I did text Bev and it's, uh, the twenty ninth.
Okay.
It's a two thirty in the afternoon.
Okay.
Are you on board for that?
I can try. I'll let you know.
Oh, let me know.
I, I gotta look at my calendar, but.
Okay. And, uh, what are those? I think I gave you these. The school ghost thing or four. But, uh, there's a flyer there. Because, did I give you one?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Well, here's a, here's another one anyways. There.
I haven't looked at the.
And, uh, this is our twenty twenty five schedule.
Is that, is that the same as the one you gave me a couple of months ago?
It might be. I, I don't know if it is or not. Um, they sent me other information. They're supposed to be, uh, putting something in the Lakeshore News. And, uh, I've been working on that. This is a serious program and if we don't use it, we, the people at Cuba County, that's twenty thousand bucks a year, you're going to lose.
Right. No, I, I agree. And, uh, that's why we need to get you. That's why we'll try on the twenty ninth. And if we can come up with volunteers to also try it, we take the same approach so that we can get it.
Uh, but when I talked to Brenda the other day, Brenda Wyman, the office for the aging, she, uh, they've been getting a steady, steady thing down in that area in the southern part of the county. And it's been working pretty good. You know, dude, you get a few hiccups here and there, but, but nothing drastic. It's all taken care of.
So just for the benefit of everybody, what Frank's talking about is Go-Go Seniors is, uh, a program that the Office of the Aging for Cuba County is offering and they're piloting it right now. And the town of Sterling is participating. And we're trying to get our seniors to participate, uh, because it's in, it's in the infancy stages in New York. California is already doing it and I believe there's a few other states across the country that are doing it. And essentially what it is is it's a program that is shared through Uber and Lyft. And it allows seniors to use, um, rides to get to appointments and back. And, uh, what they do is they call the Office of the Aging this Go-Go number. Go-Go Transport has a deal worked out with Uber and Lyft drivers and they will. So instead of having to have the app, they will schedule it for you and have your rides to pick up. And through the Office of the Aging and through the grant that they have, uh, seniors that participate, when they sign up, are given a four hundred dollar credit for rides. So you get the four hundred dollar credit. And we've had people, uh, that have used the system, that have gone, uh, to Rochester, Syracuse and things for appointments. So we're looking for people. They have to understand that it's in pilot stage right now, so we're testing it. But we need people to participate and, you know, like I said, they give a credit up to four hundred dollars. Now, there are certain limitations, um, you know, if, if there's other ride share services available.
Statman.
Statman, if you're participating in those already, then you can't do the Go-Go. But if you're not, then you can do this. Okay.
The whole thing, it'll take you right to your doctor's. It'll come right to your door, then, then they'll pick you up, take you to the doctor's, and he drives you out. He drives you out. You do your appointment, you can back out, you call, and there'll be another.
Yeah.
Driver there, because they don't sit there and wait for you.
Right.
Anyone does. And it's, and it's so simple to sign up for this thing. Like I said, there's no app. You're on, you're not online or anything. You just call the Office for the Aging and.
And. And with that, we've had some people that have actually had multiple appointments within a day and gone to all the appointments and been brought home.
Yeah.
So.
And there's no money exchanged hands. You don't tip the driver, you don't do anything. You just ride along and drive it off. It's. It started out in California over a year ago. I think it's well over a year. Brenda brought it up and, uh, and then I, when I, I read it more about it, I, and I pushed her to look into it more and this is what we come up with. And just, we just need more participants. And certain things can be weighed. Okay, so when you say you've got your license, you've got a car out in your driveway like that, but the doctor says you can't drive.
Right.
Now, you haven't got somebody to take you.
Right.
Somebody's got to take a day off and work to take you to the doctor's, so you don't have to do that.
Right.
You see, I've been doing that. Well, now they get back to the Yankees. They, uh, they're making, I think, some pretty good trades. I don't know if you follow or not, Andy, but they've been, I know football is big right now, but I still have to check in on my Yankees and and, uh, they're making some trades. I think they'll have a decent team when they're done.
Well, they lost the big guy.
Oh, they sure did. But you know, maybe they'll be good then.
Maybe. We'll say nothing for.
Uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Honored.
Okay. We met, uh, January sixth. Uh, two members were present. One was sick and one had work. Uh, one of our members had a step down for personal reasons and other things going on. We just wanted to add, uh, two other members. One is in Sterling Valley. That was the gentleman that had a step down, but, and the other one is included in Fairhaven, but she knows a lot of people that would, um, be part of the banners. Um, we meet again Thursday at five. Mm-hmm. And we'll say that we'll try to have each area of the town represented.
Looks like you did it.
Yeah. Thank Lucy for that.
Okay. Uh, I get a motion to accept eight minutes from the previous meetings.
Oh, that motion?
I'll second.
On favor?
Alright.
It's for all of them?
Yep. Motion to accept the supervisor's report.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Alright.
Alright. Okay, correspondence. We went over starting for first of all, we're depending for. Um. As we talked about briefly at the last meeting, uh, our code enforcement officer, who's also the county legislature legislator, was elected as the chair of the county legislator, which will, uh, require him, uh, to spend quite a bit more time in Auburn. Uh, therefore, he has submitted a, uh, letter of resignation, uh, for code enforcement, which, uh, we are lucky enough that he is willing, uh, to stay on temporarily while we do a search for a new code enforcement officer. And, uh, if we wish, he will help train that person. Um, so that's in there as well. Um, I plan to, and this will be in the resolutions, uh, put together, a search committee for the code enforcement. That'll be myself and Charlie. Um, and we will advertise for it and, uh, interview for it. Um, but, you know, as resignations go, I, I would say that wouldn't be a positive one, so. He's, he's doing. He, well.
It's not really resignation yet.
Letter of intent.
Correct. It's fine.
Guys. Uh. Then, uh, Miller Engineering on the old business. We did, uh, have dug in a couple of weeks ago. Uh, nothing new has moved on the Schoolcraft Road Bridge. Uh, we're still waiting for this state to come back. However, uh, we are moving forward on the Onionville Road Bridge. And that, those repairs are expected to happen in the spring. Uh, they're ready to go. Okay. Uh, resolutions. Resolution to pay the audited vouchers.
I'll make that motion.
Motion.
Here.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Yes. Resolution to change the February regular meeting to February twentieth, twenty twenty five at six P M. And authorize the town clerk to advertise for such meeting.
I'll make the motion for a second there.
Karen.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
You will?
Hmm.
Um. Resolution. Uh, the board create a C A, CEO code enforcement officer search committee with Supervisor Joyce and Councilperson Cool on the committee.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Karen.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, resolution to authorize the supervisor to sign the Williamson Law Book Agreement for the Town Clerk and Tax Collector Program.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Karen.
Yeah.
Carol.
Yes.
Charlie.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Now, I believe here.
Yeah.
I can read this.
Yeah.
All right. Uh. All right, um. We will be having a. Public hearing on local law number one of twenty twenty-five, which will start at seven, so there will be a. Seven oh five, and so there will be a delay. We're gonna go back to auditing vouchers in a few minutes while we wait. Uh, because that was advertised before the meeting time changed. Uh, the law, local law number one is as follows, follows. Uh, a local law opting out of real property tax law, section four eighty-seven.
Back up. So you gotta read that first.
Okay. Uh, please take notice that a regular meeting, public hearing will be held by the town board and. Of the town of Sterling on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five at seven oh five P M. At the town office. Located at twelve ninety State Route one oh four A Sterling, New York, one three one five six regarding the adoption. Of local law number one of the town of Sterling for the year twenty twenty-five, opting out of real property tax law, section four eighty-seven. Any resident of the town of Sterling is entitled to be heard upon said proposed local law. At such public hearing, copies of said proposed law are available for review. At twelve ninety State Route one oh four A Sterling, New York, one three one five six. By order of the town board. Of the town of Sterling dated twenty, December twentieth, twenty twenty-four. One other section of business, um, before we go back to audit vouchers. Uh, we all received the draft copy from, uh, the zoning, zoning commission regarding S T R's, right? Yes. Any questions regarding that? Okay. No questions, move forward and audit vouchers. You guys could go through the talk.
Are you done with your public meeting? You're only gonna do the hearing now?
Yeah. Oh, there, we won't have any more business other than the vouchers. And here in seven.
I don't think that'll do a hell of a weird. He got a lot of these long fans in city for the championship during the street. If you watch football, you can't help it. Their plans. See, the thing is, I don't like. I don't like either team in that game, but I want to see that game. Yeah, the East Stars plays each other. So by Sunday night, I think it's.
They might get a game in July.
Hey, however, both of our coaches, who we let go last year are now in playoffs under Redskins and. Yes, we have great coaches. We just don't know enough to.
You don't have one now. Good. Now you're getting.
Does a good job with the Pisces there.
No flex.
Oh, that's for the whole year.
No bells.
So the dickens and guys, the guys now that don't.
It's got that money, it's something else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I asked you a question, how many called it after time? And they said surprisingly, not many. They tend to, they they take care of a lot of it. I don't have any numbers on how many times we got called down there. They said it wasn't as bad as I was thinking.
The cops are right there and you can't.
I don't know about the fire, but if that's any different to being. No, I had a snow day. I texted my brother four thirty this morning and I said, let me see how you're doing. I don't, I don't think anyone else to work. Because Adams got, they they have been more guilty. They closed eighty-one. It's here, it said everybody. And so Ray, if you're back. You can get home, because you're backed up twenty miles and Adam is doing eighteen wheelers trying to get up those rails. It can't be done. Yeah, and when you shut eighty-one down and throw eighteen wheelers over there, you're a truck. So that's for that reason, I stay off the road so we get the best ball to have or have.
When I saw they were gonna get five feet in that one area in Barnes Corner, I'm thinking, oh, so.
They're supposed to get it all day tomorrow.
Down the rest of the stairs and down me.
Actually, if that's walking up, you might come over here. Well, that's what I'm saying, it's supposed to, it's supposed to stay alive, say, break out of there.
Yeah.
And then tomorrow, I don't suppose. Well, no, it's gonna break. The wind, the windshields are great, it's gonna stay, but it's gonna check a little further. Like south, southwest decision.
It's like the effects, no? Yeah. Southern, sweet love. I forgot to check the time.
Not right now, it's a water. But I think tomorrow it's gonna come out.
Yeah, tomorrow.
You gotta see the writers. There's a windmill.
The Saturday.
And that's right where it's gonna hit. They specifically said. Come around Green Bay.
Houston got snow, Austin got.
Like that part of Louisiana, that's the first time they've ever had snow on record since they cut the record. They got more injuries. They don't have a snowpuff all over Louisiana. They literally shut down everything until next week because they wanna see it out, because they have nothing else they can do.
Remember the choppers?
I was married to. You want that?
Case and hope I'm. That's what I said in this. These are not, you know, rain jamming.
Yeah, too.
Work is not playing. I would start with three hundred. You're late.
Not late.
It's you.
There you are. I'm on time.
Is it? Skating time?
Six o'clock. We're just waiting for the close public hearing right now. That's right.
We thought you were here to object.
Object on what?
Public hearing.
What's it at?
Uh, local law.
Number one.
Number one.
I got the paper in, fine, you're good. You can come here and read it if you want.
It's the way she's standing there. Pretty. Anytime. There were several. More. That's.
Around you.
Couple months. She's. Yeah. I just want to be small. And she's. Run. Run.
She's.
Right. Yeah.
No. And I've been used to. Yeah, the student. But you're.
Stay away. It's. Absolutely. Long. Time.
Position.
Real.
You know.
They got. One miss. Do. Right. Right. They have. I mean, I didn't. That'll tell you. You're. There. And I know they've got a little. He was.
Insent.
Then. And then. I can't. This. There's three o'clock in the morning. That's. Yeah. Cause I don't. They. Start asking. She's. Oh. Oh.
Oh.
It's like. Yeah, yes. So it's gonna. Pass it. Extreme. Yeah. Didn't. Yeah. The right. Pretty. It's gonna lock down.
Okay.
But. And.
Very.
Yes, right. We got a win. And space.
No.
They can play. All.
So. You may. Then. You do not. Anyway. I don't know.
Yeah.
The grades. So eventually. I start talking.
I was like. Yeah. Like. I think. They. Thank you.
Yeah.
Right. Oh.
I don't know. That's.
Yeah.
Yes.
That is. Yeah. So. Yeah. All that. Wanted.
I. So. And. And. And this.
They have. I'm. Yeah.
Yeah. You mentioned. Yeah. Yeah. Standard. Yeah. Yeah. That's who that is.
On.
So.
I was. And.
I thought it was. Eyes. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. I even said.
Hey, Frank.
Yeah.
There's one for your Yankees upgrade. Fred. C C Sebastian just got put in the Hall of Fame.
Yeah, I knew he was out of the list.
No, he's voted in. Ichiro Sebastian and Willie Wagner.
Well.
Billy Wagner.
Um, who do you play for? I don't know.
I I don't rec. I know the name.
That's good. Did they, does everybody get that? I don't think so.
They're really interesting.
Oh, you're not. You're not.
I listen.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Eddie.
He played for the Astros, Billy Wagner.
That's what we. I could do another.
But.
Yes.
Yep. We. We can do. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh. Oh. Said.
And now. We're gonna. Back up. Yeah.
Well, just. He's on the show. Yes.
Yeah. That's. Yeah. It's all good. Yeah.
Every.
Next one.
What.
And he. Yes. I think.
He's. Said. He wants. So. Like.
I have. Same. You're not.
And he said.
I'm. I don't.
It's. We have. John. I was saying. I can. Like. I'm.
I want that.
All rings. Getting. All this. So. And. But he works.
I'm.
They were. Well, and help. Major.
Just. So if you want. Don't. Quit. It's. Jackson. We got. Cause we have official sub. We have that status completely. Either that check. The official. Yeah. You all. Isn't that. Check. It's. That's. Yesterday. I didn't. Yeah.
Get. So. Then. Jefferson.
We.
So. Then I went.
You always.
So I have a doctor. Need.
Oh. We have. Can you see the. Old. I was gonna. Do.
I was. Or. Turn. Right. Yeah.
I got a look. Everybody does.
But. It's.
And. But that's not to me. So. It's. You're not. Really. Jumping. So. Or.
Yeah.
Situation. Did I tell you? Almost. It's. Yeah.
Okay. Around. In the end.
And. Shadows.
It's.
And that's. You can just go.
Round. Yeah. It was. Really. Not really. So. You're saying.
It's. Anyway. You don't. Just. And. But. There's some. They raised.
Don't be so lonely as to me.
I see. Then we see. We. Just.
This.
It's.
I'm.
Yeah. Oh, I don't.
So. I was. So. Yeah. I'm. I'm changing.
The move. Like.
I'm. Today. We got. Jack.
I can. Yeah. It's. It's. Even.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Yeah.
He's gonna put it out there. The. Said. Open.